Everybody, it is 5:30. Sorry for the feedback on that. I see you're scrambling with the slider boards. I know that'll be resolved shortly. So, we're still getting logged in on the electronic platform, but I think we are good to go otherwise. So if it's all right with council, we're going to go ahead, welcome everybody, and begin as is our tradition with invocation and pledge of allegiance from Father Wiley.
Let us pray. Gracious, loving, and almighty God, we give you thanks for the abundant blessings of this life. We thank you for gathering us together here this evening. We thank you for this city and all its citizens, and we thank you for those that you've raised up to be leaders in this community. Father, we ask that you pour out your spirit upon all those who have business in front of this council. Give them, give them voice that they can speak from the heart, and give this council ears that they may hear the concerns of their constituents. Father, we ask that everything we do and everything we say that might be according to your will and to your glory. All this we ask in the name of your son, our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
If you please join me in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, if you please conduct a roll call.
Mayor Gayler.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Jones.
Present.
Ms. Boyett.
Present.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Present.
Councilwoman Matthews.
Councilwoman Weeks.
Present.
Councilman White.
Present.
All present and accounted for. I appreciate everybody's time as always. We will move to our adoption of the agenda, council. An agenda has been prepared and presented for adoption. Are there any, Ms. Getz, Mr. Livingston, are there any changes from staff? None? I didn't think so. Counsel, are there any requested changes to the agenda as presented? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion's been made. Is there a second? Motion's been made and properly seconded to adopt the agenda as presented. Any debate? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. Please vote electronically. If we have any issues, as always, we will revert back to another format. Is it coming up? It popped up.
Everybody but Councilwoman Matthews. It's not up there?
All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes. All right. That's unanimously. Wonderful. All right, we will move forward with recognitions and presentations. We have two proclamations that we wanted to present this evening. First is a proclamation entitled First Responders Appreciation Month. Whereas first responders protect and aid the public in the event of an emergency, and whereas first responders include 911 operators and dispatchers, law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical services technicians, search and rescue teams, and other roles in the public safety sector, both professional and volunteer; and whereas first responders are our primary and best defense against all emergencies that threaten our communities; and whereas first responders show courage and selfless concern for others as they carry out their duties; and whereas first responders risk their own safety to protect others; and whereas first responders are highly trained, specialized workers who contribute their excellent skills for the public good, many first responders provide this service voluntarily for no pay; and whereas first responders maintain safety and order in times of crisis, volunteer in our communities and schools, and are a vital part of the city of Goldsboro and Wayne County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Goldsboro City Council does hereby proclaim September 2025 as First Responders Appreciation Month in North Carolina and commend its observance to all citizens. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and affix the seal of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, this the eighth day of September 2025. And Ms. Getz, I so appreciate you assisting in preparing that, and we'll ensure that copies get delivered to the heads of each of our agencies. Counsel say that you are aware. And next, we will move to the U.S. Air Force Birthday, uh, Air Force Birthday Proclamation. Whereas on August 1st, 1907, the United States Army Signal Corps created an aeronautical division to take charge of all matters pertaining to military ballooning, air machines, and all kindred subjects. And whereas the National Security Act of 1947 established the United States Air Force as its own separate and equal branch of the armed forces on September 18, 1947, creating the Air National Guard as a reserve component of the United States Air Force. And whereas the North Carolina Air National Guard can trace its origins back to March 15, 1948, with the establishment of the 156th Fighter Squadron. And whereas North Carolina has nearly 10,000 men and women proudly serving our nation as airmen on either active duty or reserve status or in the Air National Guard. And whereas North Carolina is the proud home of Seymour Johnson Air Force Base in Goldsboro, Pope Army Airfield in Fayetteville, and North Carolina Air National Guard bases in New London and Charlotte. And whereas the United States Air Force and Air National Guard play a critical role in defending our nation's skies and ensuring our continued freedom. And whereas the city of Goldsboro is honored to be the home of Seymour Johnson Air Force Base and is thankful to the active-duty personnel, reservists, families, and veterans that call Goldsboro a home. Now therefore be it resolved that the Goldsboro City Council does hereby proclaim September 18, 2025, as the Air, as United States Air Force's birthday in the city of Goldsboro and commend its observance to all citizens. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and affix the seal of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, this the eighth day of September 2025. And that one, we will deliver to our, to our friends on base in the coming days as well. So I appreciate everyone being part of that. Now, we will move forward with Section 5 of our agenda. I don't believe I'm skipping anything. Moving straight into public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. 5 dot 1 is an annexation, annexation 2 dash 25, Mr. Livingston. I'll hand it over to you, and then you can either deliver the brief or pull up a member of our planning staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a voluntary annexation, Idowild subdivision, approximately 50 acres off of U.S. Highway 70. We discussed this a few months back, but we'll have Kenny Talton deliver the brief. It was the subdivision behind the tool place or the rental place that was going back in there, for those of you that recall that discussion.
And this, at this point, what is up for consideration is the annexation of the property, not necessarily the site plan or any of that. This is exclusively the annexation of the property.
Yes, sir.
Which would then permit for sewer services, is my assumption correct?
That's correct.
Perfect. Mr. Talton, floor is yours.
Absolutely. We'll expand upon that just a little bit. Good evening, Mayor, and council. It's good to see everybody. I hope you've had a good summer, and it's good to be back in front of you. We do have just two items that we want to discuss tonight real briefly. One's going to be the petition for annexation that we're, that the developer has named Idowild subdivision. We have another one that is, pertains to some city-owned property, and we'll discuss that in just a minute. We all want to direct your attention to the slide. So here's a property that we were discussing earlier. This property, again, is located on West U.S. Highway 70, and it's located on the south side of U.S. 70 Highway between Carolina Circle and Brentwood Drive. If you'll notice, let's see, I've got a couple of devices here. On the backside of the subdivision, you'll see is O'Berry Center here. You can, you'll be able to access this subdivision through Hilltop Lane, and there's another roadway here off of 70. I can't remember the name of it just yet, but I'll get that information as we move forward. Let's see. Here's a depiction of the proposed subdivision. Thomas Engineering, T.A., is the designer. Mr. John Thomas is here tonight. John, good to see you. If you have any specific questions, let me know. But right now, again, we're just talking about the annexation of the property. So the council out there, July 14th meeting, requested that city clerk examine the voluntary contiguous annexation petition for sufficiency. On the 15th of July, the clerk completed the examination and determined that deficient, that the petition was sufficient. And August 4th, 2025, there was a public hearing that was scheduled by city council for the subject property. Public hearing notice was properly advertised, saying the time, place, and purpose of the meeting for September 8th, 2025. Again, we've talked about the location where this property is. The owner is Nolan Commercial Contractors, Inc. As the manager said, looking at approximately 50 acres of property there for a 124 lot, single-family residential subdivision. The zoning classified at this time as residential, single-family, conditional zoning. Existing use was agricultural, previous use. So again, the properties meet the standards for contiguous annexation as specified in General Statutes 1 CTA 31. Again, the petition contains the adequate property description and annexation plan of the area proposed for annexation. It is contiguous to the city of Goldsboro's primary corporate limits. The petition is signed by and includes addresses all the property owners, and that there are no zoning vested rights for the particular property. Fire protection, the city will provide fire protection to the subject property, as well as police. Refuge collection will be available, and water city will be, the city sewer is available for the developers to extend to our city sewer system, and water will be available through Fort Township. Just wanted to give you some information about anticipated revenues for the property. Again, as I was saying, it's a 124 lot, single-family development. Average lot size is around 10,000 square feet. The average sales price for a four-bedroom, two-and-a-half baths, based on a preliminary analysis from our department, you're looking at about $368,500 for a lot and home to be constructed upon each one of those lots. So if you're based on a home selling for, let's just say for $325,000, the anticipated revenue at the time of the completed build-out would be approximately, based off the city's tax rate at .69 cents on the hundred, is going to be $2,242.50. If you look at the entire build-out of the subdivision, you're looking at $40,300,000. So, if you have any questions, please let me know. Outside of that, the city adopted a new election district boundary map on August 1st, 2022. If the area is annexed, it will be a part of District 1. City council, unless city staff, or unless the council instructs city staff to include this area in another district. Staff findings, we believe the proposed annexation meets the city's policy requirements as outlined in all the above items, and city planning has no objections to the petition and recommends approval of the petition approved by city council. Mayor, do you have any questions, or members of council?
Counsel, it's our, it's our practice that we invite the petitioner up to be able to say anything that they would like to say. Obviously, they're not obligated to before we open the, the actual public hearing. Are there any questions for Mr. Talton at this mo, at this point? Hearing none, we'll invite the petitioner up if, if they would like to come forward. And again, I do want to keep this conversation narrowly tailored. We're not getting into the merits of a particular site plan at this time, purely the merits of annexing the property in. So, is the petitioner present?
I don't think the petitioner's present. I know Mr. John Thomas with Thomas Engineering.
Okay.
Get to see if you had any questions of him.
All right. We'll invite him to come forward if you have any, any comments that you'd like to offer for clarity, and then after that, we'll open the public hearing.
Not really. I'm John Thomas with Thomas Engineering. We represent the petitioner on this, and I don't have anything to add. It's pretty straightforward, but I'd be glad to answer any questions that may come up, you know, during the public hearing.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for, all right, perfect. And if you'll have a seat, we will officially open the public hearing. So, everyone, this is a public hearing for item 5 dot 1 in our agenda, annexation 2 dash 25, Idlewood Subdivision, as presented. Would anyone like to come forward and speak? All right, second call, this is a public hearing on annexation petition 2 dash 25 on our agenda, item 5 dot 1 for Idlewood Subdivision. Anyone to come forward and speak? All right, third and final call, annexation 2 dash 25, item 5 dot 1 on our agenda. Would anyone like to come forward and speak? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. And Mr. Talton, if you'll come back up, just in case any additional questions came up in the last few seconds. First off, did you think of anything else that you wanted to add?
Yes, sir.
No? Clean brief as always. Counsel, any comments or questions from Mr. Talton? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion to either approve or reject the, the current item as presented?
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we accept this item for approval as presented.
All right, motion's been made and properly seconded to adopt the ordinance annexing the subject property effective today as presented. I believe it should be a pop-up electronically. Those that are able, please vote electronically.
I'll make a second.
It was seconded by the president.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Actually, excuse me, before we get to the vote, was there any debate on that? All right, hearing none. Tell you what, I know there are a couple of technical errors. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Ms. Getz, did you get that one?
Yes.
All right, perfect. All right. That being done, we will move into item 5 dot 2. Mr. Talton, I presume you're going to be presenting that one as well?
Absolutely. This will be, again, very brief. Stony Creek, the city has a piece of property that's located on the south side of Royal Avenue between North Drive and Landmark Drive. Here's a piece of property according to the survey. And, let's see, I put another slide in here. It's part of, this piece of property, again, is located off of Royal Avenue, and it's actually part of a donut hole that we have in the city. And we're trying to close it up, and in order to do so, we need to, the city was, the petitioner requesting contiguous annexation. Unfortunately, as we were working this petition, we noticed that the railroad owns a piece of property that is adjacent to the larger piece here and here. These are the two that are owned by the city of Goldsboro. But this piece here is contiguous with other property all along the railroad going westward and eastward along Royal Avenue. We've reached out to the North Carolina Railroad Company and have asked them if they would mind signing the petition for annexation because we need their signatures as part of the process. We have not received the signatures as of yet, and because of that, we're needing to ask council to please consider deferring this matter until another date certain, which will be in October, at your regular first meeting in October.
Easy, easy enough.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, do we have a motion to table item 5 dot 2 until the first meeting in October? Yes, sir.
Question, could we approve it subject to? Like, were you still on the planning commission and stuff, or do you need it tabled?
I would definitely, let's table it and wait until we have those signatures in hand.
Thank you.
Easy enough. Counsel, is there a motion to table this, table item 5 dot 2 until the first meeting in October?
So moved.
What?
October 6th.
October 6th.
October 6th.
Motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tim. Is there a second?
Second.
Then seconded by Councilwoman Weeks. Is there any debate? Hearing none. Ms. Getz, would you like to put it up electronically, or do you just want me to call the vote?
I've got it. Just a second.
All right. All right. Is there any debate? Hearing none. All right, call the vote electronically. All received? Gets, if you would please, was it a unanimous vote?
Unanimous.
All right, perfect. This matter is tabled until the October 6th meeting. Thank you, Mr. Talton.
Good to see you. Bye.
Not ready? Yes, ma'am. As we will enter our public comment period, Section 6 in our agenda, speakers are reminded of our policy that is up on the screen, reminded to be civil and courteous through our language and presentations, and asked to refrain from personal attacks or threats of the nature, or aimed at mayor, city staff, or members, other members of the public. And as always, vulgar, profane language or gestures cannot be tolerated. So, Ms. Getz, if you would please pull up our first.
Our first speaker is William Michael Thomas.
Mayor, counsel, I hope you guys all had a good summer. My name is William Thomas. I've been, I'm a public school teacher of twenty-nine years. I'm currently teaching at Princeton High School. I've been there eleven years, and feel like I might know a little bit about high school students in North Carolina. I've taught at five different high schools from early college all the way up to Freedom High School in Morganton. I've coached high school basketball, not in very many winning programs, but that's okay. It's good, too. I'm here today about Stony Creek. We just talked about Stony Creek on the other side of Royal. I want to focus on the part that we own as a city in Goldsboro. Stony Creek Park is down across the Old Cloth Barn, and you drive by it all the time on Ash. It's falling to pieces, and I'm going to get to that in a second. Skate history in Goldsboro goes back to the eighties. Currently, we have several Goldsboro residents who work for Nike Skate. That is a major corporation who currently work and have worked in the past. We have over a dozen current pro and former pro athletes who are now serving the community, helping with everything from addiction to emotional issues to mental issues to everything going on in our community, everything. And the kids, obviously, what we're going to focus on, that's my number, that's our number one concern. I, I could go on about the mental health and the physical. For me, it's emotional. I lost my wife in twenty-seventeen. I'm a widower of three boys. I have one at NC State graduating in computer science in December. I have one, I can go on about my boys. They're very successful because I had something in my life that replaced my wife. It was something that was healthy. And it was these young men back here, all right? You're going to hear from another one here pretty soon, okay? He's got his own, his own story. This summer, we had two events. One was in late June. We called it Bobby Bashed and got our, our local pro Bobby Mitchell. He's a good, he's a good friend of mine, and one I'm very happy, sorry, that's your fault, to have in my life. We also had skate evangelism this past Saturday. We had church at the skate park, and I'm not sure if you think the skaters are actually Christians or not. I'm sure it's not really, if you turn on the TV, you don't see that whole lot. It actually is. We have two young men right here who got over sixty people, and we had everything from boards, from Good News Skate Night. That is a nonprofit. They do surf church, they do reach out for addiction, they do so, there's so much opportunity here in Goldsboro if we just could fix what we have or demo it. We have, it's all public land, all public, it's right there. So what I want, what I want, what I'm thinking about is opportunity, not only for the kids, but opportunity for our commerce. I live in Princeton. I teach at Princeton, I live in Brogdon, but I spend my money in Wayne County. There's no skate community, I'm out of town, almost out of town. There's no skate community in Johnson County. I go to Goldsboro because that's where, okay, so for us, what we need, Snow Hill, Williamson, Washington, Irwin, Hillsborough, I just named you five places that have modern-day skateparks that have populations less than ours and no airbase. They have no federal base right there. We have people from all around the world that come to Goldsboro. They meet each other every day. All right, I don't want to take any more time. I appreciate your time. Thank you for, thank you for your time. Appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
And Ms. Getz, we do have contact information?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Our next speakers, I think, Ben Jammon and Wayne Woodard.
Hi, guys. So Saturday, September sixth, we had our skate event. Six people came, and we were spreading God's word through our testimonies and everything. And we just want, we just want that to grow, grow more, spread God's word out, and the only way we can do that is with using all that land that's right there behind the skatepark, build more park, and so we can do more stuff like that, bring more people out there, and have more, more people, and keep spreading God's word and everything. Yeah.
Thank you.
Can I ask a good question, Mayor? Have they been participating in the master plan, the recreation master plan to add?
I don't know, but at the conclusion of public comment, make sure that we.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Bevan Foster.
How you doing?
Evening, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, sir.
About a couple of months ago, maybe in June, my mother started a renovation project at her house. You know, one of her goals when she retired was to add on to her house. She wanted a master, super master bedroom. During that time, everything was going fine up until she pulled a plumbing permit in her name. All of a sudden, everything went haywire from that point on. A Mr. Jeremy Hanson, also known as Matt Hanson, came and inspected the property, but he didn't, he wasn't called for an inspection. This was on a Tuesday. By that Friday, the state was at my mother's house saying that she did all these things wrong, but there was no course of actions in between him coming and the state coming. He went straight and just called the state on my mother's house. So for me, I've been, you know, writing emails and going back and forth with inspections and our city manager. And the thing that's a big problem for me is that, one, here in the city, it should be inviting for the residents to build, for anybody coming from the outside inside to build, because we want to grow, you know? But to be harassed or hassled about something when everything that was stated wasn't even true. You know, the guy said we, that she redid the sewer line, the sewer line wasn't redone. I personally had my guys go over there and dig it up to make sure that it was okay before we installed everything. But that was in his report. At this time, the state called the, the guy that's doing the actual bill, told him he couldn't do any more work, called the HVAC guy, said he couldn't do any more work, all because of this one guy just calling for no reason. Still to this day, I have no reason to know why he showed up at the house. He wasn't called for an inspection, anything. So it's just, it's bad business between the inspector's department and the residents. It's bad business between the inspector's department and different builders and stuff around the city. It's, it's, it's construction guys. I've been having my construction license since two thousand thirteen. It's guys that don't even want to do work inside of the city of Goldsboro because of the problems. We, we need to address this. You can address other things that's going on. I see that you addressed your security, you addressed all these things, addressing things for the citizens. It shouldn't take that long. You know, I've been writing back and forth over, over a month and a half now. My mom's project's been on hold for that long. That's, that's a problem. She wants to move into her room, and she can't do it because of one guy calling. And then, and then where was the protocol for which he should did that? Did he go to his supervisor first and sit down and try to have a conversation with my mother? No, or anyone, no. It was just he straight called the state, which I've heard several people have called the state on him. So it could have been retaliation, but that's hearsay. So I don't want to make, say that's for sure. But we do have some problems here in the special department. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That was our last speaker there.
Wait, Ms. Laura.
Mm-hmm.
There, there may be another one up there. It's kind of light, they said they was having issues with the pen.
Anything else?
Sign the right one?
I think she might have not signed the right one.
If, if someone made a, made a good faith effort to sign, then we're going.
I don't see anything, but.
The pen outside, I had to get one from.
There you go. Well, we'll certainly hear from you, please.
Hello, my name is Kendra Edwards, and I've spoken to a few of you about the business that I own, Healing Well Counseling Services. It is located at three thousand two Central Heights Road. On August twenty-eighth, the road was closed, and we were not able to access our building. There were several representatives, possibly from the DOT, who came and indicated that we had sixty days to before the road was going to be closed, but I think that the date they came was either August eighth or August seventh, but August twenty-eighth was when we actually lost access. They indicated that they were going to cut down the brushery in the back where they paved a smaller driveway in comparison to the other people who are also on this unnamed road. And there is no drainage either in our back way. This poses an issue for, issue for our clients because we do have some clients with gay issues. I have clients that are blind, who are hard of hearing. They're having to drive really, really close to the building to get to the paved area, and I'm just trying to get clarification because I feel like I've sent like a thousand emails to people, and I'm starting to get a little bit hopeless. We are a new business, and we also have another business located here, which is Rayland Moser Counseling Services as well, and we've had to cancel clients because some of them are not able to access their virtual services, and they just, some people, our older clients don't prefer to be virtual, and they would prefer to be face-to-face. So I guess I'm here to pose the question about what are the, what is it that we can do here? And I know that I've spoken to Mr. Chris before, and he has done what he could do. I've spoken to Brandy, trying to get clarification on what options were, and I'm still here a little bit shaky, a little bit nervous about what this means for my business and the other business that's there. We weren't given time to create a smooth transition or a parking lot for our clients either. I mean, if we thought we had sixty days and it was significantly less, I'm not sure what to do with that. I did speak to some people working on the road that day. They told me they were going to follow me over to the building and move some things around on McLean, and that did not happen. So I'm just here trying to figure out what my next moves are or how to direct clients. The other issue, I got twenty-two seconds, is what are we supposed to do about the emergency department and nine-one-one calls? What address are we supposed to send them to? Spectrum drove around for thirty minutes trying to bury a line, and it's just a lot. The transition was not smooth enough for me.
We do have address?
Do you want me to put in the business address?
We have contact, we have contact information, too, so just make sure.
Comment to you. To tell you. Okay.
Want to keep the meeting? We also want to resolve. All right, thank you, everyone who was able to come forward and speak this evening. We will move to section seven of our consent agenda. Our, yeah, section seven is our consent agenda. Mr. Livingston, if you would hear any remaining questions, and then we will move forward.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. We have four items on the consent agenda, all of which have been presented in one form or other, with the exception of the minutes that was received in your packet earlier this week or last week. Business Development Strategy Plan, we discussed last meeting, Community Survey Proposal, we also discussed last meeting, that'll be going out to residents in the city, and a grant application for the Reclamation Facility Project Expansion. So I'll entertain any questions on any of those items, but would ask for a single motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, counsel, all items on the consent agenda have been distributed and opportunities for questions. Is there any remaining questions or comments on items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
All right, Councilman Weeks, is there a second? A second by Mayor Pro Tem Jones. Is there any debate? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. Ms. Getz has put up the vote electronically. Please cast your vote. And then, Ms. Getz, when you have results, please let me know.
Unanimous.
All right, consent agenda is approved on a unanimous vote. All right, now we'll move to section eight, Old Business. Item eight dot one and eight dot two are obviously linked at the hip. Mr. Livingston, if you would please walk us through eight dot one, and if you need to blur into eight dot two to make it all make sense, so we can make sure we understand the financials involved and the strategies involved, please let us know.
Thank you, Mayor. The Crossroads Strategy Agreement is, as, as we well know, an agreement for consulting services through Crossroads, Sam Adcock, who's been working in Washington on our behalf to secure our interest with the base, particularly our fighter jets, because we've been in a little bit of a heated situation there. They've made some progress there. We've also had later tonight, we'll have Ken Gerard speak a little bit more about that. But this is our agreement that we had with them in place. It's re-ratifying that same agreement. Also, the agreement with Friends of Seymour, which is their sort of local arm here that they work with in conjunction for us, trying to identify those things that we feel are important within the consulting realm regarding Seymour Johnson.
All right, looking at the, we'll begin with seven, sorry, we'll begin with eight one, Crossroads Strategies Agreement specifically. Are there any comments, questions at this time on that piece?
I, I do have some comments.
Yes, sir, counsel. Yes, sir.
As, as refers to our Crossroads Strategy Agreement, I think that going forward, we, we need to put in some, and it may cost more, and that's something for us to talk about and discuss, but I do think that we need to put in something in writing, and not just a little blurb, but some details on things going after for quality of life issues. Because in the agreement that I read, it just states that they're going after stuff for the fighter wing, which is limited, right? And it also states that, that there are, their objectives or their, their objectives are given by the Friends of Seymour, which is alarming to me as well. Not that I don't trust them, but I just think that we need a voice to be able to say what our, our, our actual legislative objectives and agenda would be as well, what we like to see. And right now, we don't have a voice. I do understand somebody's going to say that, that we do have an executive seat on that, but the executive seat don't have a voice. So if you don't have a voice, if you don't, if you can't vote, you don't have a voice. So with that said, we can say what we want to until we are able to vote and get some of the concerns that we have on the legislative agenda, especially if we're footing the bill.
The, the finance piece of this, where that any expenditure of public funds from the city has to go through a finance committee that does consist of the city manager, does that belay any of the concerns at all, or do you feel like that's too narrowly tailored?
That's too narrow, that's, that's too narrow.
Okay.
I, I think we, we went with what we have currently last year, right? And we still didn't get any of those things that we think, or even the base commander priorities, because we, we, we don't have a voice. We, we have to have a voice, especially if we fit in, footing the bill, have to bill anyway. I think that we, is there any way that we can come together and have a, a moment or conversation, and we come up together on legislative agenda or objectives? Any way we can do that?
So I'll answer that question because I think the answer is yes, but the reality is that, you know, as you said, they're, they're willing to do that for us, but right now, they're saying that for their contract purposes, for this contract purposes, while they would love to be able to advocate more, they would have to rewrite the contract, and it would have to cost more because we're their lowest paid client, or they're, we pay less than anybody else for his services. So, but he's definitely willing to do that, and I wanted the rest of the city council to know that. So if that is something that, you know, you guys want us to do, the staff, we'll certainly bring back a proposal for that or a recommendation.
I also think there's the conversation to be had, and I don't mean to dominate the conversation here, but I think there's also a conversation to be had about what it is that we specifically want Crossroads to do at this moment in time, and what it is that we hope to engage with Friends of Seymour on in a larger, in a larger context. You know, right now, Crossroads is in a very specific role, and it's, is protection of very specific assets in a specific mission segment. But I think that our, that the folks with Friends of Seymour very much stand with us on wanting to move the needle and be, be aggressive on some quality of life things as well, including the, including housing. I know some of this has been, been very, been spoken about a lot here. And so I think that my standpoint, and this is just, I'm just one voice and one vote when it comes down to it, but right now, I think we need Crossroads deployed the way that they are. that they are. If we are successful and we see that they get freed up in the third and fourth quarter of this year, then obviously we redeploy them. There's no doubt about that. But I think that first and foremost, right now, they're being deployed to protect the mission set and the assets that are on the table. And I don't want to hold up the agreement any longer than necessary, but I absolutely do agree that in the piece with the larger Friends of Seymour arrangement here with the city, that we've got to look at larger societal and quality of life issues as well. You and I are not in disagreement. It just comes down to, at the moment, what it is that we have to prioritize. I think Chris.
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir.
I was just going to say, I'd like to certainly say that I completely support Councilmember White's desire in possibly engaging with Crossroads to provide us some additional services. And I think that we, as a council, if there's an opportunity to do that, I'm all for that, but also echo the sentiments of the mayor that what's on the table in front of us right this minute is the contract and related to the fighters. And in the big scheme of things, if we don't have those, the rest of it's irrelevant anyhow. So, I think that what we should do is to get this done and get it off the table as is. And then I'm okay with tomorrow, starting a new conversation for the way forward to incorporate what Councilmember White wants to see, because I agree with that. I just don't think it's within the scope of this that's in front of us.
I do agree with you. I, Councilwoman Boyet, I agree wholeheartedly that, that we do have to deal with what's in front of us, right? But what it does do when we sign this, when we sign it, in the contract, it says it's up in '26. So, we go a whole nother calendar year without any of the commander's objectives or priorities being discussed. So, we did that last year. So, now we're 24 months without any of the commander's objectives or priorities being discussed. And I, and I understand what most people think, that without the jets, there's no Seymour. But in the NDAA, the jets are protected through '27. Through '27. So, we do know that the jets will be there through '27. And then hopefully in this NDAA, they will push it out to '29. Right? Because that's, that's, right? So, that's the discussion. So, I do understand that. But what I'm saying is, the jets will not fly without maintenance. The jets will not fly without fuelers. The jets will not fly because none of the pilots will fly for free, so you need finance. So, to save one without the other, that's not right. They go hand in hand. That's why they'll combat support.
I agree, but if I may continue.
If you may, then we'll yield.
I agree, but we didn't get that worked out before this got put together. And I don't know who, whose fault that is. Is it mine or is it all of us is for not thinking forward beyond that? I agree with everything you said, but can we, I don't think it's feasible to say, oops, we need to add some more with this one. I'm okay with starting tomorrow on a new one, but I think we need, me personally, I think we need to do this and get it done. And I would support you first thing tomorrow morning, but anything you want to do moving forward on the next one, I'm here for it.
I got you. So, I will, I will say that I understand that we have to move forward on this. But just let the record show, this is two years in a row that we have pushed the ball down the field or pushed the can or kicked the can down the road with quality of life issues.
You got my support when I get around to that.
Yes, ma'am. For sure.
I wanted to know, could we change the verbiage in this to say with further negotiating regarding the housing and all the information that Councilmember White? Could we not change that verbiage to that?
The, in the Friends of Seymour piece, it's included. It's the, the specific language with Crossroads Strategies, where that they are, they're focused on their, their specific mission. I think that we, I think that they are open to, in fact, I'm confident that they are open to doing additional work for us. It's just kind of been focused on one specific, one specific mission at the moment, but I'm confident that they would be interested in, in doing more for us. It's just a matter of what that price would look like and doing as an addendum to this work even. If we get, get this across the line, come back with an addendum for, for additional things. I also believe that, you know, once we are successful in some of the things that are working on right now, that we're going to hear about from Mr. Gerard just a little bit in our briefing, I think that, I think that in the middle of the year, they also would shift because they're not just going to take the money and sit on their hands. Because I don't want to sit back and do nothing. I very much agree with this conversation that there are things that we, that we need to be talking about and need to be moving forward. I'm not against that in any way. I just also want to make sure that we don't lose our support services as they stand right now.
I would also interject that I spoke with the county manager and he feels that the county would be fine with changing any future contract to also add other consulting legislative agendas and things like that, that we feel compelled to, you know, work on.
Yeah, I have spoken with some commissioners, feel the same sentiment.
Exactly. Yeah, the conversation is definitely happening. I want to be very clear on that. The conversation is definitely happening. There's not, there's really not any pushback. It's a matter of getting it all written down of exactly what that would look like. So, I, my recommendation, my request of council, is that we move these forward, get these across, and then we come back with some addendums for specific things, depending on how things go over the next, over the next few weeks with efforts that we have up in, up in DC. Any other debate? I'm certainly not, not trying to shut it down. It's good, healthy conversation. All right. So, with that, council, we do have a resolution on the table that is item, where did it go? Item 8 dot 1. Do we have a motion to adopt the resolution under item 8 dot 1 as presented?
So moved.
All right, motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded by, by the Pro Tem to adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Crossroads Strategies. Is there any further debate? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. I believe it's already popped up electronically. So, if I can get my screen to work, there we go. We are one in.
Is it still not working for you?
Would you, do you mind voting by hand? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Now, following on that same conversation, which I think will be a very similar conversation, which is a good thing, item 8 dot 2, the Friends of Seymour Agreement. Mr. Livingston, any, any additional facts there?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I think that's pretty much the same situation that, you know, we're in with the Crossroads one.
Okay. All right. Is there any comments or questions about the Friends of Seymour specific agreement?
I do.
Yes, sir.
The only one I do have is two comments. One is, I do applaud them for the work that they do. So, I don't want them to think that I'm just up here not being appreciative, because I really am appreciative of what they do. However, I do think there needs to be a blurb in there somewhere in writing, in black and white, that we will have some type of say so or not say so, or we'll have some type of communicating with legislative agenda.
Could we add that? Just pulling up the agreement. Is there recommended language in a specific section that you would like to add?
It really doesn't.
Not to put you on the spot, I'm just looking through because I think we can.
But as I read it, we can, we can add another line or where it says the.
Is that where you would want it?
Yeah, exactly.
I was showing him, possibly you might could add that sentence where it says, "It is the expectation of the Goldsboro City Council that Friends of Seymour will engage and put forward substantive effort to resolve quality of life issues for the families of Seymour, including but not limited to childcare, housing, public safety, infrastructure, public education." You might could do just one more comment and other recommendations from the city council or something like that.
Even go so far, we do, council have.
That's part of the other one, right?
All right. Yes, but this extends to state as well.
Yeah, the one that you're speaking of was in the Crossroads, who said that they take their, their lead from Friends of Seymour's agenda.
So, we could put that on that too, then?
We could put it in Crossroads.
I'm okay with that.
All right. So, is there, council, under, again, looking at the Friends of Seymour Agreement, section 13, is there requested additional language to that one? And then we can say, as modified, and then we can go ahead and, and propose this one as well?
Add again?
Under number 13.
Mayor. I'm coming back to you in just a second, Councilman.
I think legislative agenda is one thing that I heard him say. That one's good for you.
Right. I would like those specific words to be in there as far as legislative agenda is concerned. All right. How about I think we do need to have some input on the legislative.
So, could you add behind public education, a comma, and any recommended legislative agenda?
Something like that. With that.
That's fine.
All right. So, then, section 13 would be amended to read in part, the final line, "Public safety, comma, infrastructure, comma, public education, comma, and other legislative initiatives as defined in resolution by council." Period? All right.
So, I make a motion, we approve it based on that modification that you just recommended.
All right. A motion has been made to approve the resolution with the modification. Motion has been seconded by Councilman Boyet.
Oh, that's.
Yes, sir.
The second thing was reporting or reports that we get. I did send everyone, they even sent Mr. Gerard, Gerard did the actual report that we received from Allies of Cherry Point. And I'm not saying it has to be that extensive, but I do think we are due something more than what we have been getting.
All right. Ms. Weeks, do you mind retracting your motion for a moment? And let's also, all right, so Ms. Weeks has agreed to retract her motion. So, the amendment on the table right now, 13, is "Infrastructure, comma, Public Education, comma," and then whatever it is that I said earlier that's, that's recorded. And then under, there's another section, and I'll apologize for scrolling right here in the middle of everything, but there was another section that related to the expectations of communication back. And that would be a good spot to call out specifics. And also, while I'm scrolling, our Military Liaison Committee of this council, if y'all would take a, have a conversation, that might be a really good way to ensure that we're engaging with our Friends of Seymour partners on a more regular basis. Just like we're using law and finance for budgetary purposes, this would be a really good way to get the Military Liaison Committee more engaged.
One thing, I'll make it for the record, Mr. Mayor, is that speaking with Sam Adcock, he had no issues with providing monthly reports rather than routine reports on the deliverables. I think that would help provide consistent feedback.
All right. I agree with that completely. All right. So, what if we added a 15 and?
Well, you know, in B.
Yes, sir.
But in B, elective body liaison, each city, each other city of Goldsboro and County will reimburse, and then it says the liaison shall report to the elected bodies no less than quarterly.
Mm-hmm.
We can put some verbiage.
Right.
We can put monthly in there or we could put.
How about the liaison shall report to the elected body in person no less than quarterly and as often as necessary when conditions require via, via electronic means to keep the elected body abreast of communications? What's, what's the appropriate frequency and modality?
Well, to be honest with the Allies of Cherry Point, they do theirs quarterly.
Right.
So, I'm not, I'm not, for what you saw, they do quarterly.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
They're robust document.
Right. You know what I'm saying? So, if we're going to do it monthly, then that's fine too, but we should manage our expectations and know it wouldn't be one of those type of documents. All right, then.
So, could, Mayor, could that just be understood? Because it says the liaison shall report to the elected bodies no less than quarterly, but as often as necessary when conditions require to keep the elected bodies abreast of communications and activities.
I think the language that is there hits what we need it to hit. I think that we need to, I think we've made it very clear in this conversation, that we expect something in writing that can be distributed as well as an in-person conversation. Also, I really do, this I would like for the Military Liaison Committee, which yourself, Councilman White and Councilwoman Taylor are actually designated members of, that could be a really good way as well to ensure that there's consistent communication. So, Eric, can we move forward with the existing language? All right, perfect. So, then, Councilwoman Weeks, you made a motion previously. Would you like to restate that motion?
So, if, if, if that's understood, then I, say we make a motion, you know, approving it, the verbiage here is reading actually what our expectation is. So, I just say we just make, I make a motion that we approve it as is with that.
With the modification to section 13.
Yes.
All right. And motion is seconded by Mayor Pro Tem. Is there any further debate?
One other point, just to make sure, where it says on page 76, consultant, this is the Crossroad portion, will provide routine reports and feedback to the parties of this agreement. I think that needs to say written, monthly reports and feedback to the parties based on articulated and agreed upon requirements from clients.
The Crossroads Agreement was, we've already voted on that one. This is the FOS Agreement. However, to that point, we've clearly expressed our expectations. Our liaison that goes back to Crossroads consistently, I believe, could facilitate that information flowing to us. We already know that our representative with Crossroads is interested in doing that. And so, I think that we've got a pretty good path forward here, especially with the language, you know. Ultimately, Friends of Seymour is the one that we are directly engaged with, so. All right. Motion that made and properly seconded, debate has been had, we'll call the vote. Please vote electronically. All right. The motion passes unanimously. Item 8 dot 2 is approved as modified. All right. Now, let's move to item 8 dot 3. Mr. Livingston, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Because of the sensitive information and potential pending litigation, I've asked that this be moved under our closed session to talk more in detail about that one.
In, in brief, three sentences or less, the interlocal agreement was approved by us, was approved by Eureka, was not approved by Fremont, and the city of Goldsboro has to discuss with its attorney what our potential next steps are. I think that's the right way to phrase it, right?
That's correct.
All right. Council said everyone is aware of exactly what's going on there. All right. We will discuss that in closed session later. All right. We will now move to item 9 dot 1, which just so happens to be a briefing from Friends of Seymour. So, Mr. Livingston, if you have anything to add, and then Mr. Gerard can come on up.
No, sir, not this time.
Mr. Gerard, welcome.
Thank you. Glad to be here. Unlike Mr. Towne, who has already left, I will not concede summer just yet, but I'll hang on to summer a little bit longer. Anyways, thank y'all for having me and I'm glad to be here. Enjoy listening to your conversation about Crossroads and Friends of Seymour. I will tell you that I talked to Sam about an hour on the way here today and he was, I could hear, well, when I could hear him, when the sirens in the background were not going, he was walking the streets of Washington. And right now, and he was hoping to send me a message, but it appears it's going to be around 1 a.m., which I guess none of y'all want me to text you then.
We will.
When we find out. But the amendment getting into the NDAA from the House is actually in the Rules Committee today. Time to send all those in, deadline was yesterday at 5:30. And so, they're all in, there's a thousand or more, I think a thousand and 34 to be exact. And I asked Sam what he thought and he said. And I asked Sam what he thought, and he said probably about two hundred or less, somewhere in that neighborhood would get incorporated into the House version. There are sixty that are bipartisan somewhere in that neighborhood, and one of ours, or ours is bipartisan. So he's got his fingers crossed and it's big right now. And I will tell you that I texted him once you approved his contract. And I got a huge, big thank you on there to y'all. So he, you know, I'm here to sort of tell you thank you and for all, they have really worked this summer, long hours and are, as of, like I said, I mean, he will know at one AM or whenever that is tonight. I mean, it's what they get paid to do and it's what they like to do and it's what they do. But it's when it's time to fight, it's time to fight, you stay with it until the end. And having said that, I was listening to your conversation about quarterly, monthly, and all of those things. I think your military committee would be a great place to get some current updated live information. Those could be Zoom, those could be whatever, in person, written. Sometimes you probably would not want the same thing sent to you every month. I would, you know, my comment might, it might be more beneficial, there might be more fruit in it if it was quarterly. But that's just my two cents worth, and then always as needed. But right now, Councilman White, you're correct, to twenty twenty-seven, we are, we hope that our aircraft are safe until the end, based on the last N D A A. But languages change and things can be retracted. And so we're making sure that both in the House and the Senate that that doesn't occur. But also twenty twenty-seven will be here before you know it. So we are working hard at that. The Secretary of Air Force has his opinion on things, the Senate has their opinion on things, the House has theirs. But as I'll echo, as I always have, Representative Davis and Senator Bud have been huge. We couldn't do it without them. I mean, we've got to have their support and they have done to get the language written, to get members of the legislature to co-sponsor. It's not someone you say, well, who wouldn't co-sponsor a bill to, you know, help the base? But there are people that just focus on healthcare and they leave me alone, I don't want to do anything else, you know? And members, I'm talking about members of our representative, our delegation up in DC. So it's not just that easy to pick them up the phone and call and say, hey, Councilman Boyett, I'd love for you to support my, you know, my efforts. I mean, it's not always that way or that, you know, putting their name on a bill. So it takes a lot of work and then getting the language written that people can accept is also important. So the real work starts tomorrow when we know what's, what bills, I mean, what amendments were added to the N D A A from the House side. And that's where we'll be staying in touch, certainly, probably more than monthly right now, because that'll be changing on a daily basis. And I think the easiest way since we could miss council meetings would be to run through your, through your committee as we have talked about, and I think that would be good. And also, before I open it up to any questions, I'd like to make a comment about the quality of life. Ron, I could probably ask you what quality of life means to you. I could ask a number of people what quality of life means. And the folks at Crossroads would welcome at open arms the ability to help us with those things. But they need some direction, and I think that's what y'all are talking about, is getting them some defined things, probably starting with a small couple of things that we could knock out real quick. But, you know, whether it's housing, whether it's childcare, you know, whether it's, you know, education, crime, whatever it is, wherever we need federal support, putting those things down so that they would have marching orders on what to do, they would welcome and be glad to do, whether it's a separate contract with a city, a joint contract with a county, or an amendment to the existing contract. That's y'all's business and as you well know. But they would welcome that and they just need some direction. But currently, the big issue has been the squadrons, operational squadrons. And without those squadrons, Councilman Boyett said it best, that'll solve a lot of housing problems if we have any issues there. And so we'd rather solve those problems by adding additional housing. So anyways, I am open to any questions y'all might have, but there's a lot going on and I've sort of broad brushed it, but I will be glad to get more direct to anything that you have or anything that you've heard and would like some clarification on.
I'll yield the floor and just will ask one thing. Again, Congressman Davis, you know, fantastic supporter, Senator Bud, fantastic supporter. We've got an incredible DC contingent right now that is bipartisan and bicameral, if we're honest. We're hitting every piece right now. Can you talk without making my eyes roll back in my head? Can you talk a little bit about what the purpose of this amendment is, what it does?
Typically, every time I talk, people's eyes roll back in their head. I'm used to that now. So to what this does right now, this piece within the House, it, I guess, to simplify, it gives, it changes some language to allow the military, the Secretary of Air Force to, they feel like their hands are tied, you know, with the language that we gave them. And they want to be able to analyze and study some procedures about divesting, about getting some of the older aircraft. The language is two things. That allowing them to study more and make some decisions on what's best, whether it be moving some airplanes from one base to another base, and also securing to us at least two operational squadrons. And that's probably the two most important things to you at this point in time. But it gives, it frees up who, who will, right or wrong, that the Secretary of Air Force and believes that, you know, we tied their hands when we gave, when the twenty twenty-five N D A A said, you know, you cannot divest without a one for one.
Counsel, any comments or questions? And obviously you can ask Mr. Gerard, you know, one-on-one or in smaller, in smaller groups. This is a very public setting and it's a very sensitive strategic legislative strategy session. So certain things naturally are not built for, for this setting.
And I had a wonderful one-on-one with Councilman White. So I would, I mean, I'd be glad, I came up here and he bought me lunch. No, we had a really good meeting. So I would love to come up and have a conversation with you, or you can call me if you want to, you know, some more information or something you heard, but you left a meeting, but.
Making sure that information gets there. Yes, sir?
Just for the record, I do, I really appreciate the work that Friends of Seymour are doing. And I do understand that N D A A language may change and could change, or we pray that it do not. But however, I do think that we are professional enough and crossroads are professional enough and Friends of Seymour as well to be able to run after multiple things at the same time. And that's just my argument. My argument is not to stop, put one gun down and go try to run to pick up another, but to take up both weapons and try to fire multiple targets.
To your point, and just sidebar conversations with them about our D CIP applications, and y'all can Google that on your own, but D CIP applications, they have said, let us know when you submit. We are interested in trying to further that, you know? And now, obviously, certain things you can be more influential on than others. But nonetheless, you know, we've got a group that does want to be engaged whenever we are pursuing strategic and specific federal allocations, and so we.
And I also talked to Mr. Adcock, Sam, and we had a great conversation. So I'm pleased with what they're doing, and I told Mr. Gerard that I'm pleased with what they're doing. I just think that we can do multiple things.
Well, listen, and just as a citizen of the community and a longtime advocate for this county and the city, I mean, who wouldn't want to see some improvements in any quality of life? Whether it's childcare, whether it's crime, whether it's housing, whether it's education. I'm, you know, Wayne County and the city of Goldsboro is near and dear to my heart. And I mean, I would, I would love to see those things. And I think crossroads can help us outside of the umbrella of military agreement, outside of the efforts of the base. And maybe that's where the conversation should go. But I don't believe that you'll get an argument out of anybody about helping support that.
Counsel, any other comments, questions? All right, Mr. Gerard, thank you as always, and let's, thank you as always.
Yeah, but I would encourage you, please call me if there's something you hear or would like to talk about. Be glad to do that.
Sounds good.
Thank y'all, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
All right, let's move to item nine dot two, a proposal for a development of a water master plan. Mr. Livingston.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Bert Sherman, our Public Utilities Director, here. What we're asking for is to submit a grant to the A I A program to do a water master plan to help understand what our future capacity needs are and a few other things about where we're at with the plant right now. That's a really, really brief, short synopsis of it. But if you want to have more questions about why we need this, we're a growing area. There's other people that would ask us for water, which we're working with to see what, how much it's going to cost to get them water, which we have approximate idea what that is. But this is long-term infrastructure planning.
I'm confident that this could have gone on consent agenda, given the general forty thousand foot view of it. But do you mind if Mr. Sherman comes up?
No.
Which just kind of explains what it is that he would, that he would hope to see? And what would that document look like? What does it do? How do we leverage it for pursuing other funds, all those, all those things?
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel, how are you? The A I A or the asset inventory assessment. Thank you. Basically, it's similar to what we did with the sewer side, basically looking at our distribution lines, looking at our infrastructure of the water plant and seeing what needs to be repaired, what is good, what is not. And that's basically what this is all about. And what we proposed in here is we got an opportunity to file for a grant to get this study done. And that's the bottom line, any questions on that aspect? I mean, it's just, just to see what we have, because we've not done that. We've done the sewer side, but we've never ever done the water side of it.
Counsel, any comments or questions on this? It's been a consistent refrain that we've discussed amongst ourselves, as well as members of the public, that we need to be pursuing every grant opportunity that we see in front of us. And that's certainly resonated with staff and with department heads. Is there a fiscal match on this? Would there be the, if we were awarded it, is there any potential financial hit?
No, no, it would be a straight.
Perfect. All right, Counsel, any other comments, questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the resolution approving the fall twenty twenty-five water system master plan, A I A? The thing just popped up.
Same.
All right, motion has been made and properly seconded by Councilwoman Taylor. Is there any further debate? Hearing none, we'll call the vote, it is on your screen, please vote electronically. All right, and perfect. Motion passes unanimously, resolution's approved, go forth and conquer. Thanks, guys. All right, let's move to item nine dot three, Mrs. Getz.
Good evening, Counsel. There are currently four vacancies on the city of Goldsboro's boards and commissions. Respective boards have met to make a recommendation, and those recommendations are listed below. I also sent counsel a listing of each application, a listing of each board member in their current district, and the applicants that are listed on the sheet as a whole. So the first vacancy is District Three, and that was a resignation by Ms. Tyler. And the board recommends Linda Alves for that position. The second committee is the Mayor's Committee for Persons with Disabilities. There is two resigned positions and then one position that the clerk recommends removal due to her having, having six absences. And the board did reach out to her, she's having some childcare issues, but I don't see a resolution of that. So the board recommends Corey Rimsburg and Lauren Wood to fill the two resigned positions, and the other position will be open for now.
All right.
There's also one student position vacant on the R A C that's been vacant for about two years. So if anybody knows a student that would be a good fit for that position, please ask them to fill out an application.
And that student can be junior or senior?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Counsel, any discussion on this resolution? Again, each of these have been run through the respective commission, and these are recommendations from the commission. Hearing none, we entertain a motion to approve the resolution appointing members to advisory boards and commissions as presented.
Same.
All right, motion has been made and properly seconded, is there any debate? Hearing none, we'll call the vote, please vote electronically when possible. All right, all votes being tallied, motion passes unanimously, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
And again, just to reiterate, Ms. Getz, the, there are open positions. If you need a recap of those positions, please reach out to her. It is coming up on the time of year where we will have a lot of seats come open. So start looking around, and members of the public that may hear this, please do consider, it does make a difference. All right, we will now move to item nine dot four, Mr. Livingston.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. This item came back several months ago, was asked by some council members about security and safety within the building for council meetings and other events that we may have. And I think the attorney's also been asked it. So I asked the public safety, our public safety officer, Robin Correynis, to give some information, some recommendations, some findings. I've also talked to the police chief about it. Robin couldn't make it today, he had some medical issues, and so I've asked the chief to kind of maybe give a general kind of overview with things and his opinions. But the big driver here is, you know, not anybody, you know, somebody, random person could come in, and this is what's happened throughout the country, and come into this building and it's not really secure. They could come in with a concealed weapon and a bookbag, we would know. And we would not be safeguarding the public or the city council or staff. And maybe, you know, rather than talk about, you know, later after the fact, we're trying to talk about it now so that it's, do we feel safe? Do we need to do some things other than what we've been doing? And what is the general consensus of the city council about what should our next steps be? And again, the chief is here to kind of tell you a little bit about some of the things he found in some of his research. But that's, that's the point of today's, or tonight's discussion, to kind of, kind of get the feeling from the city council about what should our next steps be.
Wait, the Robin wasn't able to be with us, but Chief, thank you for making time.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
Good evening.
I really don't have a lot of information. This is something that's been kind of working in the background since twenty seventeen. In twenty twenty-two, we had an incident in City Hall where somebody came in and was going through the common areas of City Hall, filming and taking videos and was upsetting the staff. So this has kind of been a discussion that's been brewing for a few years. I had done some research back several years ago, back in twenty twenty-two and twenty seventeen, and was just throwing some numbers and the cost and everything together. And then when this topic came up again, Manager Livingston asked me to look into it and kind of thought that it would be better for Robin and the safety coordinator to kind of work on this. So he's taking it from here. And then with him able to be here tonight, I'm kind of back in the middle of it. You've got the background and information in your packets. I'm mainly here just to kind of facilitate and answer any questions that you may have. Some of the measures that were in coordinator, safety coordinators packet is already been implemented, such as cameras in the parking lot, I think reserved parking signage has been put up in the parking lot north of the City Hall. Officers here in council, in chambers, and also in the anteroom, that's something that's been in place now for over a month. And it kind of ebb and flows. Sometimes we'll have two officers here if we just think we're going to have a big crowd. That kind of helps monitor what happens, the overflow in the anteroom as opposed to what's going on in chambers. So the two officers up here is, I don't want to say a standard, but it's not uncommon. Metal detectors were discussed several years ago, the metal detectors back in, I think, twenty seventeen. 2017 or 2018, when this all started. One metal detector walked through, I think it was a quote of about $4,600. One of the difficulties that I find is from a staffing standpoint, if you, if you have a metal detector for somebody to walk through, if they walk through and it alerts that they've got something on them, you're going to need at least two officers manning that point. One, to have the person step aside while they search them and find out what's setting off the alarm. And then you've got another, another officer that still mans the metal detector. Same way, if we wand, the wand-ing was about $152 at that time. Again, it's a simple procedure, but again, at minimum, you're going to have to have two officers at every entry point, one to do the wand-ing if anything's alerted, for that officer to handle that. The other one's got to maintain, so we don't back up with people coming in. Entry points, you know, kind of where, where are we at with the entry points? Do you do a controlled entry in here in the historic City Hall downstairs, or do you do it on the side by the HR where the citizens have access to the elevator, or do you do it at the main entrance? There's just some logistical things that need to be worked out. Again, I'm just merely here to facilitate the discussion and try to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Mr. Livingston, a, a couple of things that are, have been discussed as sort of low-hanging fruits, something like a, you know, the bookbag policy consolidating to a single entrance. Do you have any, any specific pieces that you would like some council resolution this evening on to give you some guidance? Or is this 100% open for where do we want to go?
Well, it's open. And I think that, you know, things like the, things that you can do that are reasonably low cost, like a no bookbag policy, how effective that would be, if that's something that we would enforce. If someone came in here with a, say, a bookbag, how would we enforce that? I guess would be a question that I'd, I'd ask. And if that's something the city council would feel would be a wise policy to have in place. One last thing that somebody could come in to actually, I mean, they could come in with a weapon either way, with, especially if they had a code or something like that. There's lots of ways that, that somebody could do that. But certainly, a bookbag makes it really easy, too.
Counsel, I know this has been something that has come up a number of times over the last, over the last year and a half. Let's give our manager some direction. What are some things that we would like to see implemented? Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, Mayor. So I think my biggest concern with all of this, I remember when I came on in 2019, just being the only woman, there were some safety concerns that were raised about, you know, just the obvious. You know, the guys, they were tough, they go walk themselves to the car. But for me, there was no type of safety measure. Nothing happened. Then we had two women to come on board, and I raised those same concerns, and nothing happened. The incident in 2022, when someone was able to come in and do that, our staff raised concerns, and nothing happened. So my concern with all of this is, council has made some concerns, and now we are trying to secure this building two days out of the month, when our staff come here every single day and interact with our folks. And I have seen nothing in this policy that would secure our staff, who actually come and contact with the public. So when we start talking about how do we safeguard this building, I'm hoping that it includes our folks that have to do this every single day. Because we're only here twice a month, usually for a couple hours. And I'm not minimizing us wanting to feel safe or be safe either, but I feel like our concerns should be set for the whole building, because our staff still have concerns. There was some aggressive panhandling that came up sometime last year, if I'm not mistaken, and safety concerns was raised. And while our police force did what they could do, I'm talking about us from a policymaker standard. We didn't do any of those things. So I think our effort should start. I think council made some strides implementing some of the things that they implemented already. I also don't, I really don't want to risk, well, I'll reserve that for another day. But when we're having our officers to do certain tasks, and to be tasked to do certain things, I just, I really want our officers to feel valuable in their work. And I don't want to lose any officers based on those tasks that we have been giving them, to do certain things. But that is where I'm, I'm at with this. I think what we've done so far, I think it's a bit excessive considering, but I would like for us to pay some close attention as to how we're going to safeguard our employees and our public. And what does that look like if a developer or presenter or one of our staff members come in here with a bookbag? Are they going to be subjected to the same search that we would a resident coming in with a bookbag as well?
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, sir, please. Just, just off the bookbag recommendation, I, I posed a couple of questions on that. I don't know, it could be good. I don't, I don't know. But what about women with, with bookbags for pocketbooks? You know what I'm saying?
I think you could probably treat it like sports arenas do. You can bring something in a certain size.
So like a clear bag?
Right, or a clear bag, or, you know, it can be.
That's what I was thinking, more of a clear bag type thing. I do think, Councilwoman Matthew brings up some valid points, but I also think that we also need to be proactive and making sure that the building, the entire building is secured. If, if we're going to go this route, then we need to ensure that the people who inhabit the building the most are secured and have peace of mind.
And, and on that, I think in the packet, I don't, I'm not really familiar exactly 100% of what y'all had. But I know back when, when I looked into it back in 2022, and there we, we, I contacted a, a security company to see if, if they could work like council meetings. And, and the hourly rate is actually higher for them just to come in for two or three hours Monday evening, the first and third Monday to handle council meetings, versus if you were to hire them to be a Monday through Friday, work City Hall, and then the first and third Monday, after they do that assignment, they roll over here at 5:30 to take care of this. The hourly rate does change. Run some numbers with an officer. If we were to do a callback pay for an officer and, and assign them to City Hall detail, it's going to cost about $71,000 for the officer for one year. I don't know how that stacks up necessarily with the security, but I know we did reach out to security companies to get some quotes. We would have to, to reengage them to get some more quotes. But for them, it seemed like it was worth their while more to do the weekly thing. I agree that, you know, City Hall was, was vulnerable back then. There has been some security measures that have been put in place as far as cameras and stuff like that. But I think it's, not much has changed over there. So I think it definitely needs to be part of this solution.
I think in, in taking care of the entire building, we as a council will be taken care of. That would be all-inclusive.
Counsel, sorry, your.
Just a question, and I really hadn't thought about it until Councilwoman Matthew just mentioned it about the security for the whole building. I was under the impression, so I want to be corrected, that in my mind, the only person that someone could walk in off the street and access is the receptionist. Because is that, is that not correct? Because everybody else is behind a locked door, that you got to get buzzed in?
My understanding is, is the other, the other sites are fobbed, secured.
Right. So the only person that somebody during nine to five business hours, the only person somebody can direct access is the receptionist at the front door, is what I thought. So if I was wrong, I wanted to know, because that's a valid concern if we've got vulnerability with employees. But I didn't think that was the case here.
Well, I think your, I think your point, that right now, there is that single public access point. So I think it begs the question, if, if it's okay discussing this publicly, what is currently in place at that point? I know she's got a couple of different cameras, right, temperature and things like that. What, right now, should we, should this conversation, this is a really good conversation. This is morphing into something really, really good. What would staff like to see if we were to add something at that point? And I'm kind of thinking about courthouse, you know, sort of, I guess, feeling now. Is that something that we want to, you know, task staff with exploring what it would look like to make that, and then treat that as the main entrance for council meetings as well? But it seems like if you make the investment and do all the equipment there, you just use that as your.
I think we have to be proactive and do something. Violence across the country when it comes to meetings, that kind of thing, has picked up over 80%. And I think we have to be proactive now and look at what kind of measures we can be put in place. And so my recommendation is that the staff would put us together some type of proposal that would not only make us feel safe, but our, all of the employees feel safe as well.
Mayor, I don't normally interject, but I would just comment that the water department, collect the water payments is open, too.
Right, right.
It's just more than the receptionist.
Well, yeah, but you have to come through that one entrance to get over there.
If you walk around here, you're going to ride into the water department.
Right.
And that door's open.
I think that's the point, is that, that one entrance right there is, is the entrance. So I think that resolving that, making that a, a better entrance, then takes care of the water department, that takes care of council meetings, takes care of, you know, employees during the day, which are obviously a, a top priority here. So counsel, do we have some direction to task our manager or, or his delegate with coming up with, with a plan, a reasonable proposal to add some, some capabilities at that, at that site? That's my question. One, yes?
I do, yes.
All right. Then what I'll do is to give you direction in the form of a motion, I'll ask for a motion on two different things. If you'd like, I'll break it apart. One is the bag policy, if we want to go that route. And two is additional capabilities at, at the single entrance and making that our single entrance for council meetings as well. Does that seem reasonable?
I have a question.
Oh.
So if we're going to, but if we're going to put a metal detector, a bag policy seems redundant for me. If, if we're going to put something at that entrance, and everybody's going to be coming through that space, then I don't think we should say, you got to have a particular type of bag to come in, because that bag is going to go through the metal detector. So it's going to be cleared before it can come in. So I don't think we should do both. I, I think we should choose which one we, we want to do. And again, we have to discuss, what does that look like for our staff who have bags? What does it look like for council? I know I carry a big bag sometimes. What does that look like for, for us? Because we need to be held to that same standard, and we need to go through the detectors as well. But I just don't think we need both. If we want to try one first, then cool, but, but also funding is an issue for our metal detectors. But at any point, if somebody wanted to get through here, when I come around the, the front desk, I can go straight up our steps. And yes, everything is locked, but we got a lot of windows, and I can see our beautiful clerk that sits in that seat every time I walk by. So there, there is more than just, a key fob is not keeping people safe. If, if that's the way we're trying to spin that, that's not sufficient enough. I think it was a great move in the right direction.
Yes, sir.
To her point, just for the sake of asking, what's the county's policy, bags versus related to metal detector? Do we know at the courthouse what that is? I don't.
Yeah, I do. I don't know.
Well, I, I will, I, I will say that when I go over there, I take the same bag I bring here. And then all they do is tell me to, they, they wand, you know what I'm saying? But they don't have a bag policy.
Gotcha.
Doesn't seem to, they don't seem to have one.
Right.
Let me put that out.
Because you go through the metal detector, you went through the metal detector.
Right. I carry my laptop bag through there all the time, too. So, yeah. I'm, I don't have a, yeah, that, that's completely fine with me. The, the point here is I want to be able to make sure that we're giving clear direction to our manager, so that he's not having to, to read, to read minds. So counsel, in the form of a motion, and the motion would be to, you know, instruct staff to prepare a proposal for something. Can I get a motion on the table to be able to give some guidance?
I'd like to make a motion that our staff look into what would be the possibility of adding a metal detector there at the front main entrance.
Motion's been made and properly seconded. And Ms. Getz, were you able to get the motion clearly?
No, sir.
Do you mind restating?
I'd like to make a motion that our staff look into the possibility and the cost efficiency of adding a metal detector at that main front entrance.
And motion was.
Not seconded.
And motion was seconded by Mayor Fred Sum. Is there any further debate?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to ask Councilwoman Wees, would you consider amending your motion to include any other safety measures? So if we could just get a wand, or if we was able to get a third-party company that chief mentioned, so not just limit it to the metal detectors, but allow them to research any other possible security option? Would you consider?
Mm-hmm. Yep, I'll, I'll amend that. And I'm up for looking at any of those possibilities.
So, so, see if this is right. Staff to look into the cost of a metal detector at the main entrance and any other safety measures.
Any other safety measures that could be implemented at that entrance to, all right. So motion's been made and properly seconded, and we're at the debate stage. Councilman White, I heard.
I was just going to ask a question to chief. Doesn't your security guy, doesn't he come up with these plans for buildings and stuff like that?
About the safety, or, safety security, or our community police services to do a walkthrough. They can do a site security, more for businesses and residential. Nothing wrong with them coming over here and maybe doing the same thing.
I was just, I was just curious. See, that has nothing to do with.
I think they're capable of doing that.
But I'm, I'm just saying, you're asking, just speaking for me, you're asking a novice, right, to, to, to come up with a, a plan when we got somebody who can actually.
Yeah, I mean, I would check with Robin Garganis to see if he's already, if he's capable of doing that, which I would think he would be. But if not, I don't see why we couldn't, you know, have one of our officers do it that's done them before for.
Yep, certainly expecting all of the talents on the table for the city manager to be utilized in coming up with a plan for that, for that entrance. So good points, good conversation all. Is there any further debate? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. Please cast your vote electronically when prompted. All votes being tallied, a motion passes seven, nothing. Mr. Livingston, you have some direction. Come back with some sort of proposal in the, the coming weeks, and we'll see what we can do to effectuate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Yeah, sorry to have to put you through this, chief. I know you're supposed to have your night off.
Congratulations on that. All right, we'll move to item 10, city manager's report.
Okay, just a couple items. I, I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but I just got to comment on the Freedom Fest. I thought it went really well this year. Great attendance, a lot of people out in the street festival portion of it. No mishaps that I'm aware of, so that's always good. It keeps on growing and, and kind of giving us an identity here. Just recognizing first responders and our military. It's just, it's a great theme for the city of Goldsboro, and it's really kind of, it, it makes our festival more valuable because it's really meaningful. I think the concept of freedom, and then that whole week of dedicating the Freedom Circle with the new Freedom Tree. So, and then to top it off, you know, before that, we had an example of our, our first responders doing a great job over there at Dare Place, putting that fire out and, and taking care of the residents out there, the community stepping up. So I just really couldn't sit up here not comment on all those great things that were happening with the first responders in the city with Freedom Fest.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I got, Mayor.
All right. And with that, we will move into Mayor and council member comments. I remind everyone, we do have a closed session thereafter. So it is our first meeting of the month. Yeah, it's our first meeting of the month. So as a tradition, we'll begin with Councilman Boyett to my right, and we'll move across the desk. Councilman, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, just, I wanted a couple of shout-outs and accolades for, for a few folks. I'm, I'm marked through Freedom Fest and Dare Place, since that was covered by the manager. But that was very important that, that someone mentioned that. I don't want to steal anybody else's thunder, that want to make further comments for that. But as always, thank you to all our hard-working city employees and staff. The city couldn't run without you. You're all valued and appreciated, and I take great pride in saying that every opportunity that I have. The, another thing going down that list, the employee appreciation event that was put together for our, our staff, that was a wonderful event. It was well-attended. I was happy to be there, and I think that it went very well. And a shout-out to Adam and, and his group for hosting that, and all the volunteers that made that possible. I think our, our employees certainly appreciated that. I'd like to also make another special thank you again to our code enforcement, minimum housing, police department. I, I've had some issues in my district lately that's required the assistance of those departments, helping me resolve some things and get, and, and I just, it's nice that we have, we have a really dedicated staff. Each person here cares about their, their job, and cares about this city, and cares about its residents. And you can see that whenever we interact with, with our employees. And that's very much appreciated. I'd like to also say a special thank you to our police chief and our fire chief for coming to my Rotary Club. coming to my Rotary Club and being a guest speaker this month. That was very much appreciated, even though I did accidentally refer to the fire chief one time as the police chief. I told him I'd do something in the future to make up for that. And last but not least, I saw it mentioned, I believe the manager had mentioned that U.S. News and World Report named us as the top 24 city in the state to live. I think that's phenomenal where, you know, it sort of shows the direction that we're trying to head in now and sort of reminded me of about 30 years ago now, 32 years ago, Money Magazine named this city a top 10 city in the whole country. So it's nice to feel like we're trending in the right direction. That's all my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, Flores, yours?
I have no comments tonight.
All right. Ma'am, Flores, yours?
Yes, I don't like to echo so much, but I do. I am so happy and pleased with the responses of the individuals all over the city, but especially in my community with the fire at Rosewood. There were many of my constituents that went there, directly there at that fire and tried to help, just to talk and help the individuals there. And so I just want to commend you and thank you so much for doing that. I thank the community for coming together, the entire city. And I'm just so grateful that we have that love and camaraderie with individuals, that they will be able to just come together at a time like that. And I'm so appreciative to that, and I commend you for that. I also want to thank the staff, and even though I wasn't able to be at the event, I do appreciate you greatly and thank you for all you do. And we do want to put safety measures in for everyone. This city hall has been vulnerable for years, and I'm so glad that we're having that needed conversation and putting things in place.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Thanks, mayor. So one thing I wanted to do was to challenge the council with the commit to civility. The past few months, we have made a lot of strides to ensure that the public, we were kind of protected from the public, even down to some of these safety measures that we're doing now. But I also want us to be proactive in how we are with the public as well and how we are amongst ourselves as a board. So just a quick brief on what civility is. It is about disagreeing without disrespect, seeking common ground as a starting point for dialogue about differences, listening past our preconceptions and teaching others to do the same. Civility is the hard work of staying present even with those with deep-rooted and fierce disagreements. So we've seen different things come before council, and while I feel that some of those things were rightfully stated, some people feel differently. But I also know that we have lacked some level of decorum in how we interact with the public from this diocese. And I think it's important, if we are, if we are holding our public accountable for all of our policies and public comments and all the things, then we should be willing to do the same. So it takes 70% of our board to commit to doing the actual training. I don't see why 100% of us wouldn't be down with that. It's hosted by the League of Municipalities. I'm also tasking our city manager to make that a priority for this board. I've been advocating for us to be more proactive together in team-building and figure out how we can coexist in this space together while we're seated here. And I've provided a copy for everyone. There are nine pillars of civility that we will go and talk about. It goes from anything to just being kind and knowing how to ask questions and when to know that it is just your opinion, it doesn't make it law or fact. And I think that's important for all of us, to make sure that we stay accountable for ourselves and how we respond from this diocese as well. So I hope the clerk will maybe put it in y'all mailboxes so you can have a copy.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Councilman Boye, I just wanted to publicly thank you. He joined me for a small little forum in my district, District 5, with Chaffin Place for the Homeowners Association. So I just wanted to say, sir, I'm grateful that you attended that with me and you could answer a lot of the planning questions that I didn't have the education to answer on. So I wanted to publicly thank you. Also, I wanted to thank landscape design, the DGDC, City Public Works, and Parks and Rec Department, along with the many others that worked for the unveiling of the Blue Star and the New Gold Star. The memorial service was absolutely beautiful, every aspect. And mayor, you did a phenomenal job, you and Representative John Bell. So all of that was just excellent. Also, Pikes Crossroads Church for inviting all of us as elected officials to attend the service and honoring us. Thank you so much for including the city council in that event. And then finally, if the council would let me, I would like to wish my biggest fan who is watching right now a happy 30th wedding anniversary. So happy anniversary to my husband. 30 years, I'm celebrating at city council right now.
Thank you. Sir Flores, yours?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and a happy anniversary. I echo the sentiments of everybody who said that, you know, Freedom Fest and all that good stuff. But also Dillard Alumni Association had an event on last weekend that was great as well for some of the kids to come out and get some things and some roundtable talk and those type things. So it was great to see those kids come out. I would, I have just a couple of concerns. The limbs and the clippings pick up, and I would just speak within District 6, so that's really what I've been monitoring. So I would like to tell the constituents that we do have a plan. We hope that we're back on schedule real soon and that we do understand and we know the inconvenience. Whoever built the bridge on New Hope Road, right there, right across from Shelley Drive, they did a great job. They went out there with their own personal weed whacker. They cut down the grass right there on New Hope Road and they built a temporary bridge so that pedestrians can walk across and get to the actual greenway. It's a great, great justice. So whoever you are, please let me know so we can celebrate you publicly. And the last thing is over on Bain Street, I think one of the dump, the garbage trucks was leaking hydraulic fluid or something. So there was a big pole, there was a big stain there. And they're asking, could we get the street sweeper out there or something to see if we can minimize that actual damage?
Got that, James.
That's all I have.
All right. I'm going to say a lot of the same stuff. Freedom Fest, again, these sorts of things do not happen without an incredible amount of work, some from volunteers, some from folks that are, you know, on the back end cleaning up the mess and a lot of work on the front end doing prep. Fantastic event. All the people that volunteered their time and talents and those that were tasked as well, thank you. It was a fantastic event, went over beautifully. The Blue Star and Yellow Star memorials at Freedom Tree, just absolutely wonderful way of taking markers that are, that were otherwise were out on the highway that were seen but not really read, not really able to be studied, and make them a focal point. Bring them right here on Center Street and make it a spot where they can be actually really respected and enjoyed. Again, echoing some of the previous sentiments to all of those affected by the fire at Dare Place, you know, my heart goes out to you. The, watching this community rally and respond, though, every time you see a disaster, open your eyes, you'll see some people responding, and it's just absolutely incredible the way that this community rallies around folks consistently. And I want to see more of it. I appreciate everything that everyone is doing, whether it's quietly or publicly in their own way. Couple of things internal to the sitting. New employee orientation last week went wonderfully. HR did a great job pulling everyone together. Enjoy meeting everybody. We've got some really fun personalities that have joined the team. I love, I love getting to meet everybody. It's just fantastic. The employee appreciation paramount, Adam and his team over there, along with Human Resources, just did an absolutely fantastic job. Really good event, well-received. And again, just thank you for doing something. We can never say thank you too much, so thank you for saying thank you and just trying to put forward an effort to do it. And the last thing I'm going to close on, mayor's youth council is back in swing and got to go and welcome them on their first meeting. Mayor's youth council this year is going to be handled under Parks and Recreation's capable leadership. I look forward to seeing how that evolves and look forward to meeting, well, spending more time with each of those folks over the course of the next year. Council, ask Ms. Getz for the dates. We'll make sure it's on your calendar. Stop by. No pressure at all, because we don't run the meeting, they do, but it's just a fantastic group of kids. The future truly is bright for us and it's good to get to highlight it. So that concludes my comments, council. We do have some matters for closed session. Ms. Getz, Mr. Lawrence, make sure I get this right. Matters related to potential litigation, matters related to personnel, matters related to the negotiation of a contract for real estate, and, minutes. So it's just those three. So council, may I have a motion to go into closed session to discuss those three subjects?
A note.
All right, motion's been made. Do I have a second? Motion's been made and properly seconded to go into closed session to discuss the three that I just said. Do we have a, or any debate? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. That is not popping up. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Want to oppose, so our motion passes six, one. All right, we will go into closed session. Let's take a quick break and then we'll reconvene in the entry room.
Happy Anniversary.
30 years.
We're good? All right. Council, we are back in open session. There being no more items to come before council, entertain a motion to adjourn.
No.
All right. Motion has been made by council in weeks and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem. Is there any debate? Actually, there is no debate. A motion to adjourn. So all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same not, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. We stand adjourned. Good night.